Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County Forum for Candidates for Snohomish City Council Positions Four and Five. I am your moderator, Vicki Roberts-Gassler, member of the League, former president, and currently the secretary. Candidates for Snohomish City Council are Kerry Zimmerman and David Flynn for Position Five, and Tom Merrill and Brian Mills for Position Four. All candidates have been invited. Brian Mills will not be participating in this forum. Candidates for Positions Three, Six, and Seven are participating in a separate forum. The League thanks all the candidates for running for office, for their willingness to serve the community if elected, and for participating in this forum. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or political parties. We do take positions on issues that we have studied and on which we have reached consensus. Ground rules for this forum were sent ahead of time to all candidates. Let me briefly explain the question and answer period rules. Opening and closing questions have been shared with the candidates. Other questions have not been shared. However, we have made each candidate aware of the issue areas this forum plans to cover. And we thank all the community members who sent us recommendations about local issues. I will pose the questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond. 90 seconds will be allowed for the final question. I will announce this change clearly. We are using a countdown timer that is visible to all candidates. It shows elapsed time and alerts candidates when there are 15 seconds left and when time is up. When you see the timer turn red and hear the chime, you are done. I will change the starting order for each question, rotating through all the candidates to ensure a random and fair sequence. The order for the first question will be Ms. Zimmerman, Mr. Flynn, and Mr. Merrill. Please feel free to ask if you need to have the question repeated. Let's begin. The first question goes to Ms. Zimmerman. What qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
Thank you. So, I have a lot of qualities. I'm a successful business owner. I have managed homeowners associations for several years, which is really similar to a city. So I have experience doing most of the things that I would be doing in the position of a city council member. And beyond that, I've been involved in the city, whether it's going to council meetings or just involved in community groups for years, six or seven years at least at this point. I've created a pretty large network that I can draw from for ideas and assistance, you know, help with getting things done. Besides that, I'm a leader. Every job I've ever had, I've been put in a position of leadership. I'm currently part of a leadership group, a community outreach group within my office. And I was just elected as Vice President of the Board of Kohaia Days. So it just shows that other people see that in me as well.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my name is David Flynn. I bring to the council position a long history of project management. My occupational profession has been in project management, construction management, in the municipalities, from federal contracts to city contracts. So I think I'll be able to bring a good budget mind as well as a capacity to understand government and how it works in that team-type atmosphere. So I'm excited to bring that knowledge and experience to council. Along with, I have a huge passion for a city and a heart to hear from as many people as I can in regards to what is best for the city and incorporate that into how I would use those values and those traits and that experience that I have to hopefully be fruitful as a council member for the members and the neighbors in the city that I've met so far. And I've appreciated all of that time. So with that experience, I hope to bring a good education as well as value.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
Thank you. I'm just completing my first term on the city council. Prior to being elected to serve on the council, I served on the Snohomish Open Government Committee. I've served as the council liaison to the Public Safety Committee, currently serve as council liaison to the Economic Development Committee, and representative to Snohomish County tomorrow, and liaison to Community Transit. At Community Transit, I was elected to serve on the Board of Directors and appointed to their Strategic Planning and Financial Oversight Committees. I have a degree in computer science. Actually, not true, excuse me. I have a degree in computer information systems and a master's in organizational development. That combined with 35 years of executive experience in managing and designing execution of large projects has helped me develop the skills in change management to bring viewpoints to consensus on how to proceed.
Thank you very much. For the next question, the first to answer will be Mr. Flynn. What are the biggest challenges facing Snohomish and what are its greatest strengths? And please speak loudly.
Thank you. From my experience in communicating with my neighbors in our community, I think the biggest concerns is safety along with our planning of roads and infrastructure and making sure that we plan to maintain them and have plans to do so has been one of the biggest insights and conversations that I've had so far. The second seems to be how we will grow as a city and be a welcoming city to everybody, our neighbors, as well as people who come to enjoy our city for shopping and entertainment. And with that, how we will incorporate affordable housing and housing that people can afford who already live here, as well as people who plan to come here, whether it be our children, our friends, and our neighbors. And so I think those will be some of the biggest challenges. And in that, I hope that will form a great council team that will consider everybody's thoughts and in that form, a good council that considers those difficult challenges not as challenging. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
Yes, we have several interesting challenges facing the city. Let me focus on just two of them. We too face the crisis common to our entire region, which is affordable housing. Our housing stock is in short supply and the cost of it is fast becoming out of reach for the low-income and stretching working families and seniors beyond their budget. Secondly, we are challenged by climate change. The warnings of 15 years ago are now a reality. And as a public concern, we're challenged to establish rapid forecasting to anticipate and be ready for such events with measures to protect our vulnerable citizens. As an obligation to our grandchildren, we're challenged to do our part to take measures to reduce our contribution. And our greatest strength are our wonderful residents. They're active, engaged, and generous. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I have to agree, especially with Councilmember Merrill, that affordable housing is a great need right now. Being a Realtor, I'm sort of right in the thick of that right now. And there, something has to be done to ensure that folks don't get priced out of their homes who are already living here and just make sure that there are more options for folks in different price ranges and different life stages and those things. I agree that climate change, we have such a beautiful community, gorgeous farmland that we're surrounded by, and we need to make sure that we're protecting that. And I also think, just to add, the divisiveness that's happened in the last few years, we really have to open those conversations and work together so that we're all trying to be on the same page for the things that we want for this community that we all love.
Thank you. For our next question, we will begin with Mr. Merrill. What are the issues, if any, in your city arising from the pandemic, and how would you address them?
Yeah, the issues of this pandemic, which are not over yet, will echo for years. Families and small businesses are still working out from under the financial impact of job loss and business closure. The city has several avenues where it is addressing the pandemic issues, but let me share just one of them, given the time that we have. The pandemic changed probably forever our ways of shopping for goods and services. It accelerated the move to the internet and emphasized the need for changes in business practice involved in that move. So the city council approved using a portion of the American Recovery Act funds for consulting, coaching, technical assistance, and market research to help our small businesses as they work to reach customers in new ways. This is important. Keeping a small business community open and vibrant and competitive is vital to a healthy Snohomish and a healthy economy.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I agree with Tom that we really need to protect and assist our small businesses in making up for revenue loss and whether that's, you know, purely financial assistance and/or, you know, helping them find programs that will, you know, how do you market differently? How do you work within the change system? Because, again, it's not, it's not going away anytime soon. And, you know, even when the pandemic is over, it very well may have changed the way that we do business forever. So how do we help them keep up with those changes? Also, you know, are there worker incentives that we can provide or help them find that assistance to retain the workers they already have? To, you know, add additional workers? I know that's a big issue with the restaurants. So just helping connect them to resources, I think is the biggest thing.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, being a small business owner myself, feeling the impacts of the pandemic have been a struggle and trying to come up with new and creative ways to succeed or let alone sustain has been challenging. And thankfully, we do have assistance programs and I've been thankful to see our current council working with businesses in town to help assist in ways to keep them productive and in business and to grow that revenue. So on council, I would look forward to ways that I could assist in that as well as marketing and avenues that we would bring new business into town, safe new business, whether it be safe outdoor activities, new ways to advertise and make sure that Snohomish is a loving and kind and wonderful place to visit as well as profit our businesses in our city by doing so. So I'll be looking for that as well as just being minded of what programs that we can bring and assist our businesses to grow and sustain through continued pandemic times, which are
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the next question, we'll begin with Ms. Zimmerman. What measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Snohomish? And what should be provided to the community's elderly population, especially those who need support services and housing?
That's a great question. You know, the city itself is not going to be building housing, so we need to be attracting maybe not lower-income housing, but lower-priced housing. And then specifically to the seniors, you know, making sure that if they need to go to the food bank, that we can assist them with that. Whatever services they need to help them, you know, continue to stay healthy, to, you know, further their dollars that they have. Oftentimes, they're on social security. Just again, it's connecting services, having that conversation, making them aware of the services that are available to them. I think those are the most important things. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, I, thank you. I think having awareness and education and communication with our existing housing awareness programs and assistance programs is super important. And in having that communication and the right people advocating and in charge of looking at how to best assist us in these areas, because we definitely are challenged in all of the areas of housing. In regard to the seniors and all of the people needing that assistance, I think that support is needed. And I support the programs that help bring that assistance to them, whether it be sustaining their current program so that they're not hit with this housing crisis and can sustain their current standard of living. And programs such as the local Snohomish Senior Center that supports them in various ways as well as advocates for them and on their behalf. And so I look forward to how I might advocate as well on their behalf and for the housing programs that we have. So I hope to be a part of that.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
Yes, could you repeat the question again, please?
I could. What measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Snohomish? And what should be provided to the community's elderly population, especially those who need support services and housing?
That's a great question, and that's been the subject in many city council meetings and workshops over the last year. Right now, we are working actively, working actively to look at city properties where we might be able to partner with somebody to build housing on there. We passed a tax incentive earlier, a couple of years ago, that gave tax breaks to people that were building, that would build houses for low-income and seniors. Give them a tax relief for about 12 years to do that. We do have a vital senior center that we support and other options for the seniors to use. We look forward to partnering with other outside agencies as we go forward. We've looked, we are looking, and I will talk to this in more detail in one of ours, but we are looking to build some, to create a part of our property on Midtown into low-income.
For the next question, we will begin with Mr. Flynn. What is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and members of the community whose ideas or life experiences are different from yours?
Thank you. My occupational and experience has exactly these types of, I won't say challenges, I will say fruitfulness. My day-in and day-out business is focusing on projects and target-minded ideas, and with that type of an idea, we're able to create leadership teams that come to projects and problems with ideas that come to a common-minded fruition to complete the project. So I'm sorry, I was a little scattered there. What I really hope is to see that we would be on the same team. And my leadership skills over the years have worked to produce target-minded goals. And with that in mind, I hope to be able to gather a team and work on as part of a team to be project-minded and fruitful on the team. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
Thank you for the question. It gets to the heart of a well-functioning council. My business, my experience in business indicates the best way of working productively with others is to approach them with respect, listen with genuine curiosity and a willingness to learn from them. Years of responsibility for designing and implementing projects of all sizes and complexity taught me that the best ideas come from a broad inclusion of many viewpoints, expertise, background, and even worldviews. That, in fact, diversity is a strength. The best, or at least the most workable, ideas are the ones people will support, and people will support what they have helped to create. I think other members of the city council agree that I do listen deeply, and I work to find common ground that brings the council to ways to proceed. And I have a little bit of time, so I'm going to share a paraphrase of Vincent Churchill says, "If we all agree on everything, all but one of us is unnecessary." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
I think it's a great question. I think that the most important thing is having the conversation and being respectful, listening to other viewpoints, whether, you know, it's something you agree with or not. And, you know, the truth is, we're all here together, on council and in the community. There's going to be people that have a different way of thinking, that disagree with you, have a different path to get to the solution. And you have to put your own sort of emotions sometimes aside and come to the solution that works the best for the greatest number of people. So I'm personally, I'm very passionate about certain things, but also I do understand that some people have maybe a more workable idea. So really, it's just about being open to having that conversation, not just with council members, other council members, but with the community as well. You know, maybe we do town hall meetings, things like that. Just opening up that conversation, I think, is number one.
Thank you. For the next question, we will begin with Mr. Merrill. What are the most pressing environmental issues your city faces, and what would you propose to address them?
I spoke briefly earlier tonight about the climate change when mentioning our greatest challenges. I'm working with Councilmember Ray, liaison to the Public Safety Committee, to propose or to encourage the committee to look at climate issues as a public safety priority. Next, I've been hearing from citizens concerned that we're reducing our overall tree canopy. I propose working with the city staff to review our policies and make sure we have appropriate regulations in place to preserve, when possible, and generally increase our tree population. Finally, to really take on the issue of climate change, we need to work on a larger scale. We need to participate in alliances with other municipalities, counties, states, and businesses to craft policies that encourage green construction using green building materials. We must ensure a level playing field for everyone, and Snohomish by itself is much too small for the ecosystem.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you. You know, I think that the plastic, plastic bag ban is a great step in the right direction. I do think also that we need to partner with other agencies. We have the Snohomish Conservation District. We have community groups like Green Snohomish. And we have resources available. There's science, you know, that's widely available or ideas that are widely available. You know, we need to talk to the people that are smarter than us about this and really consider the future and, you know, whether it's the financial impacts of it, inclusive with that, but also what are the long-term effects of the decisions that we're making now? And this isn't something that, you know, we're just thinking a year from now. We need to think 20, 50 years in the future for the things that are gonna, our grandkids are gonna have to deal with.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn.
Thank you. Climate change is definitely at the top of the list in regards to promoting awareness and education and how it will affect our city, how we will be impacted by it, and most importantly, how we will learn from it and grow from it and become participants in working with the best solutions to sustain and have renewability for our city and for our nation and for our world is a priority. So I think collaboration, like we've been hearing, is really important. And leaning on the committees and the foundations and collaborating with the bigger districts and counties in the state on how we're going to best serve our community as leaders is a priority. So I hope to do that well. I hope to become educated that I would be listening for the things that are a priority and that we would be working as a team in the city of neighbors and friends to see how we would best participate in our city, participating in these issues that are at hand for us. So that would be important for me.
Thank you. For this next question, we begin with Ms. Zimmerman. What should be the plan for Snohomish to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
Thank you. That's an extremely, extremely important issue right now. And I, and I said this on other questions previously, but we have to listen to people that have different lived experiences than us. You know, there's been a lot of conversation from certain people, "I've never experienced this." Well, you're not the kind of person that would experience some of these issues. So we really have to, these people are living some of, these are things that are happening. So we need to have these conversations. Start with your neighbor. Start with, you know, the people that your kids are going to school with. And it's about education, learning, you know, the true historical facts of things that have happened in the past and how we can do better in the future, listening to the people that are having these issues. And I think that's the place to start.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn.
Yeah, I think that listening and having conversations and being open to truly hearing and having an open mind to other people's experiences is a wonderful start. And most important, I think, creating education and awareness is top of the list for people to understand. Creating a compassion and empathy for any area of minority should be a priority for us. And however we might be promoting education and awareness as city leaders would be a priority for me and a compassion that is very much in my heart. So I think that we have to have an empathy and a compassion for everybody and open to everybody's point of view within the best reasons of moral and ethical values. And I hope that we'll be able to do that in conversation and come to grow as a great city that we are and even a greater city that we can be. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
Let's start with the basics. That city leadership, all of city leadership, acknowledge that some of our citizens experience racial inequity. Last year, after the murder of George Floyd and the incidents on First Streets, the city council listened to hours of testimony from kids in our schools and their parents and people that grew up here and moved away, and teachers sharing their living experience speaking of that. Those that had the courage to step forward, we need to regard with respect. And that testimony should not be discounted or ignored or dismissed. City leadership should step in through working with other city organizations that have stepped up, that are addressing the subject. The community leadership group established by the city council after those events, the faith communities, business leaders, the school administration, Snohomish Education Association, and Snohomish for Equity.
Thank you. We have arrived at our final question. You will have 90 seconds to answer this last question. We will begin with Mr. Flynn, and here is the question. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community? Mr. Flynn.
Well, I've had a wonderful time on our campaign trail, and I have been listening with open ears to my neighbors. And I would like everyone to be aware that my, I plan to become educated and understand the position of city council, position number five to its fullest, and listen to you as my, as your councilperson and as your neighbor to best serve you on council. With that, the issues I hope to solve are, I shouldn't say solve, but participate in resolution of is the housing. I hope to hear from our neighbors on how to best resolve and incorporate the needs that we have that are in front of us with being able to listen to everybody and hear the best way that we can serve, grow, and expand because we are and that is happening. How I can also listen and how to best serve in regards to our public safety and our safety needs and the concerns of each and one of our families and our friends and our family, and friends who plan to visit and live here. As well, I want to be able to say that I support our entrepreneurs, our small businesses, as well as our big businesses who bring revenue and support our businesses as a, or support our city. As an entrepreneur myself, I love to support great ideas and marketing and love to support business expansion and growth, and I would be well in support of all of our businesses and what they bring to our city.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
Oh, thank you for this question, and I'm going to expand on some points that I made earlier. We've talked mostly about issues and how to address them, and I want to spend this time talking about an opportunity that if we do it right, will greatly enhance the city of Snohomish now and on into the future. You may have heard about the Midtown Project, for which I serve as council liaison, and I want to speak to just a portion of that project. That large empty parcel down on Avenue, West of Avenue D at the end of 13th is up for sale by the county. And we're in the process of establishing the permitted uses and regulations and design standards for any future development there. We have lofty goals for that. The city council wants to increase our housing options to include affordable housing. We wanted to create jobs and work opportunities and expand our economic base for future resiliency. And manage all this while keeping our values and vision for the community in ways that honor And manage all this while keeping our values and vision for the community in ways that honors our past and ensures we maintain Snohomish as a place where we want to live and others want to visit. I'm really excited about this initiative, and I want to work on it and help it unfold. And so I would be honored if you give me the chance to do that. And finally, I'm going to give some time back, but I want to give my thanks to the League of Women Voters for supporting democracy, for recommending and promoting voting, and for this forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmerman.
Can you repeat the question one more time for me, just so I have?
Yes. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community?
Okay, thank you. Additional issues, I mean, I think we covered quite a bit. You know, I just want to make sure that we, sort of as Tom said, you know, we have an incredible history. We have a fantastic gem in our city itself and what we have already. And I would love to just do everything I can to protect that, but also be really forward thinking and future minded. We want this community to be a fantastic community for years and years and years to come. So, you know, addressing those affordable housing issues that we talked about earlier, addressing our homelessness issue. You know, it's not quite as visible as it is in other places, but it absolutely exists here. There are children in our schools that don't have homes. So what can we as a city do? What services can we connect them with? What things can we do to, you know, stand in the gap where, you know, whomever has sort of stumbled a little bit in their life? So I think that's extremely important. And again, like I said, future minded, what are the things that we can do with the environment, with our businesses to ensure that everything is healthy, that we stay green, that we're clean, that our businesses are thriving, and that this is, you know, I always hear, when I tell people I'm from Snohomish, every single person says, "Oh, my gosh, I love Snohomish so much." And I do as well. That's why I'm running. And I want that to continue to be the response.
Thank you. That concludes our questions. The League appreciates these candidates for joining us and for running for office. A recording of this forum and will be available, and other forums will be available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website and on our YouTube channel. Find the links at l w v s n o h o dot org. We encourage you to explore additional information about these and all candidates. The Snohomish County Voter Pamphlet will be mailed to residences starting on October 13th. Vote411.org, sponsored by the League of Women Voters, is another good source for nonpartisan voting information. Finally, general election ballots will be mailed on October 14th, and Election Day is November 2nd. Please vote. This concludes our candidate forum. Again, thank you all for joining us.